Yeah. Okay, I'll do as well.
Five thirty, let's stand for the pledge, Tracy and Lita's.
Thank you.
I'm glad we've been here today in the United States of America. It's the Republic of British Townships, one nation, a liberty, and individual with liberty and independence throughout.
Roll call.
Jenny David.
Here.
Brenda Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles will take here, Brenda Simmons here, and Scott.
Yes.
What's the agenda, any additions or corrections? This is.
Did the personnel committee meet?
No, we meet next Friday.
Next Friday.
Okay.
Any other additions or corrections?
Yes.
Thursday. I'm thinking about budgets.
Yeah.
There's just so many good committees going on, I can hardly handle it.
I, depending on where we're at with time, I just wanted to talk about a possible millage. I'll put that under G, let's see where we're at with time. Public comments, item three, any public comments on agenda items only? Agenda items only?
Yeah.
A lot of.
Okay, this is about the lease agreement with West Branch Township and the property over there with the ball fields. After seeing the agenda, I'm a little concerned with the lease agreement changes. I don't know who proposed the changes, but I want you all to know that this has never been discussed with anyone on Ogama Hills Recreation Department Board. I've been a board member for almost twenty-five years. I am not an original member, but I've heard a lot of the history. I'm here because of the way this was all went down. Ogama Hills Rec has two board members from West Branch Township. I would assume board members have known about this and approached you guys for the revised. Um, we didn't know anything about this until I looked at the agenda on Tuesday night and had to notify our chair and our treasurer, our secretary. Our, I'm the treasurer, they're the secretary, sorry. After seeing what happened at the last meeting, um, when Mike Derpy was here with you guys, um, he gave a lot of false information. He, I don't know who he was representing. He was not here representing Ogama Hills Rec. I'm assuming he was here representing West Branch Township, but everybody was confused on who he was here to represent. There was a lot of false information that he gave. Um, I see that there's no transparency here, um, with their doing. I appreciated Brenda doing the research that she did when she found that the county purchased the property. I have been recently told that Rose Beasley, the old chair, is the one that applied for the grant. And the county got the grant money, and then that's when the county purchased the property. I don't know that for sure, but that's what I've heard, and I'll have to do some research, but of course, I just found out about this two days ago. So, um, we want to look into that, so I'm asking that you guys not make a decision tonight. I think we need to look into this a little bit further. Um, we just found the nineteen ninety-nine agreement with West Branch Township and Ogama Hills Rec saying that we are the ones to maintain the fields. And now they're trying to go behind our backs and take us off any paperwork that shows it, so. Um, I just think that things are being done behind the scenes with no transparency, and I would like things to be researched before you guys make a decision.
Thank you.
I've been the treasurer for twenty-plus years, and we get support from Ogama Township every year. We get no town, we get no support from West Branch Township. The DDA has given us money for big projects, but we have to go approach them, ask them for money, then they'll give us money for it. But the actual township has not supported Ogama Hills Rec at all since I've been the treasurer. And in the lease agreement, it says that they're supposed to be insuring and paying the utilities and this, and we've been doing that since I've been on the board, so.
You're on the which board?
Ogama Hills Rec.
Okay.
Yes, I'm the treasurer for Ogama Hills Rec.
Okay. Thanks, Tracy. Come on up, sir.
See how she did that within a minute?
Yeah. I was so fast.
Can I read this?
Go ahead, you got it.
I'm Danny Turrow, I'm the secretary of West Branch, um, rec board.
Now, Ogama Hills Rec?
Ogama Hills, yeah.
Read what you got written.
See, it's not written.
You just got your last name.
T U R O W. Uh, starting July twelfth, remember this date, twenty twenty-two, at our regular meeting held at the West Branch Township Hall, we requested that West Branch Township help support us. A West Branch Township trustee on our board brought it up at their next township meeting. He reported back on September thirteenth meeting that they have funds and they would get exposure. This effort to support has continued, and each subsequent meeting, we have always been told that the township wants an updated survey and is working with the county. Finally, at our March seventh, twenty twenty-four meeting last month, the trustee told us it won't be necessary to do a survey. This township board has not supported us with any financing of projects. The chairman has gone to the West Branch Township DDA and requested and received some money a couple of times over the years. But in all fairness, I do want to add that West Branch Township has a proposed budget for this year, and it shows they want to earmark nine thousand dollars from marijuana dispensary monies to us. I replaced Margaret Winslow, secretary for our department. She was a township clerk at the time until her retirement. The township has no desire to be involved evidently. Margaret was very involved with our organization and has even secured grants from a forestry organization numerous times. The request by the township to remove the Ogama Hill Recreation Department for a ninety-nine-year lease is purely a power grab and should not be allowed.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Come on up.
Same group. Jim Lucas, the chair of Ogama Hills Recreation. I don't have anything wrote down, so I'm going to kind of shoot from the hip. Um, I've been doing a lot of research ever since we found out that we were on this agenda. And I've talked to a lot of the old board members that were original board members when this got started. And it seems like everything points back to, um, Rose Beasley, who's the original chair. And she apparently wrote the grant for this with help from Bill Gascoigne, I think, from the West Branch. City. City. And then they put it through, Greg Norris was instrumental in doing some of this stuff too. He's a realtor, and, um, he found this properties to buy, and I guess Rose wrote this, um, I just talked to everybody today on this, so everything's kind of a little bit sketchy, but she's the one that wrote the grant and then pushed it through with Dale Sheltron in Lansing. He was a state representative at that time. And everything, like I said, everything's sketchy. We haven't had time to do all the research to find out what all this was about, but from what I'm getting from the old board members and everything, this whole thing was set up for Ogama Hills Recreation Department. With Ogama County being a, the DNR, a DNR trust fund grant was, was given. And they couldn't just give it to a person or anything, because actually the board wasn't really designed yet, so they gave it to the county, apparently. And somehow the county got the township involved, but the whole thing, basically what I know is that, what I've heard is what this whole thing was started for Ogama Hills Recreation, so. I would say if there's going to be any, if there possibly any changes to the lease agreement, I would say West Branch Township should be taken off instead of Ogama Hills, but that's just my point, or my point, so that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any other public comment? I think, any public comment on the phone? Item four, appointments, Nathan Miller's, Stevens and Company, related to our annual audit. Good evening, sir. Come on up.
Hey, hi, everybody.
Hi.
So, as I've done, well, I just, I share, and I usually do with all my others, we'll kind of just go through the PowerPoint presentation. Makes it a little easier to digest in this giant, bound reporter here. So, I'll just keep going with that. Um, the first couple of slides, just kind of just give you the layout of what's going on. Let me get to slide three. That talks about the first set of financials that we have, called those government-wide financial statements. And this is the combination of all of your funds and then adding in your long-term activities, so like your debt and fixed assets. And our favorite, um, net pension liability and net OPEB liability. Um, so talking about those, those big numbers, the net pension liability this year ended at over ten million dollars. And the OPEB just under five hundred thousand. Um, the component units I listed there, that's really just the road commission. They also have a net pension liability of four point eight million and OPEB liability of almost three hundred thousand. Our ending net position for these government-wide financials this year for the primary government ended at ten million, three hundred ninety thousand, um, which was a pretty decent increase over the prior year, uh, four point seven million. And our component units have, uh, almost thirty-nine million in that position. Vast majority of that is your road commission infrastructure. And then because of those pension liabilities, a lot of governments find themselves in the red. Fortunately, you're not one of those, um, for the government-wide side of things. Then to talk about our changes for our government-wide, biggest things from last year, on the balance sheet, we now have a long-term settlements receivable. Um, as you know, the opioid settlements are coming in, and, um, this consists of the Jansen and distributor settlements that weren't received by year end. Um, and as we get better numbers for all of those other settlements, those will be added in as we go. Uh, unearned revenue decreased by almost a million dollars, and that's really just spending down our ARPA money. Uh, the net pension liability, actually, the liability itself went up, but when you consider the different deferrals that come along with it, it went down, so that's a positive thing by about one point two million, and the OPEB went down, um, eighty-two thousand five hundred, and our debt went down just for debt payments, so we don't have any new debt. Next slide, go over the different fixed asset additions. Uh, I'm not going to read all of those to you, but they're there for your reference to see what all we capitalized this year. Um, slide number six, talking about revenue changes. Operating grants, capital grants, had an increase of about two point five million. Vast majority of that is our opioid and settlement-related revenues. Um, and all of, all of that money, though, is restricted by that opioid, um, by those settlements for remediation of the opioid epidemic. Um, then property taxes, those increased by one point three two uh, million. The vast majority of that is taxable value increases and the rate change for the road patrol. Um, and our ARPA revenues did increase by two hundred eight thousand, but so did our corresponding expenditures. So the way that ARPA works, if you remember, is we got a lot of money upfront, we recorded it as unearned, and then as we spend it, we record that revenue, so the expenditures and the revenues will line up, um, aside from your bank interest. Uh, expenses, pretty consistent, actually, from the prior year. Uh, we did have non-net pension liability-related payroll and benefits increased by about half a million. Um, but the expenses related to the net pension liability decreased by, uh, five hundred fifty thousand, so kind of offset. Um, our housing contracted services increased by about hundred twenty-four thousand, and then there's various fluctuations throughout. They were much smaller. For our component units, uh, just kind of listed, uh, what those changes were from the prior year. Road commission increased almost seven hundred thousand. Drains went down, uh, almost nineteen thousand, EDC increased almost thirty thousand, and the land bank decreased about sixteen thousand. So after those statements in there, you'll find the fund statements on page sixteen. So these are the, the funds that you're used to dealing with and budgeting for. Um, we have four major governmental funds this year, the general, the housing program, ARPA, and opioid. And then for the enterprise, we had three majors with the transit, the tax umbrella, and the two thousand twenty-two delinquent tax. Um, so then I list the, the ending fund balances for all the, the major funds. General Fund ended at thirty-four thousand four thirty-six. These percentages right now are useless. Uh, in the future, um, you'd like to see about twenty percent of your current year expenditures and a fund balance. Kind of a, sort of a rainy day. If revenues disappear, you, you can kind of keep going for three months or so. Uh, but I still put them there for now. That was an increase over the prior year of almost eleven thousand. The housing program fund ended at a hundred eight thousand, which was a decrease of just under eleven thousand. ARPA is sitting at sixty-six thousand, which it was zero last year, but that entire amount was bank interest offset by bank fees. Uh, otherwise, everything, revenues and expenses bought up against each other. And our new opioid fund ended at four hundred fifty-eight thousand ninety-three, so that's the money that actually came in during the year, uh, less the small amount of expenditures we did have that met those remediation qualifications. So all of the other governmental funds totaled just over one point two million. This is an increase of a hundred sixty-seven thousand. Of that, the vast majority, one, almost one point two million is restricted, and then about fifty thousand is committed to some other purpose. Uh, and then to focus on the general fund, so this is kind of the, our hot topic every year. Um, and, and one thing I want to highlight, which I don't think I touched on last year, is that with GASB fifty-four back in two thousand eleven, the general fund added the law library and the soldiers and sailors relief under its umbrella. So when you're looking at these, at this audit report, you will not find the law library separate or soldiers and sailors separate, it's within the general fund. So when I tell you that in this audit, cash and cash equivalents for the general fund shows zero right now. Well, as you know, it's not zero, Karen tells you every meeting, it's, it's negative. We can't show it that way in the audit, so we post a due-to-do from with, in this case, the ARPA fund. And within this writing on this slide, that due-to-do from was five hundred twenty thousand four eighty-eight this year. That will be reversed on ten-one, so once those are posted, you'll see that negative again. Um, but my point in bringing up the law library and soldiers and sailors is that while I have zero showing on the audit report, the one-on-one general fund portion is still negative a hundred thirty-one thousand four oh six. Law library has fifteen thousand, soldiers and sailors has a hundred sixteen thousand to support that zero, basically. So if you want to look at it a different way, to get to zero for the audit, the general fund one-on-one is borrowing from ARPA to the tune of five twenty, borrowing from law library for fifteen, and borrowing from soldiers and sailors for one sixteen, in cash only. Um, and I want to emphasize that negative cash is not ideal. Um, I put it in here in this paragraph. Essentially, you're borrowing throughout the year from every different fund in that common cash pool. And it, it really has significant effects on your investments, whereas if this fund has to support the general fund and help pay the bills, well, then it can't sit in the bank and earn interest in that fund. So it's important, I want to highlight it, I know you guys are aware of it, but I'd be remiss to not mention it. Um, fund balance for the general fund ended at a positive thirty-four thousand four thirty-six. However, because we're able to, well, we're required by GASB fifty-four to combine these funds, the one-on-one piece is actually in a deficit of eighty-six thousand five hundred. Law libraries at a positive fifty-two hundred, soldiers and sailors at a positive almost hundred sixteen thousand. So that's one thing I don't think I've ever mentioned since I've been presenting, um, so I wanted to highlight that for you.
Thank you for doing that.
Um, next slide, government, governmental fund, fund balance. So this is broken out by different funds for a three-year history, kind of see your pattern. Obviously, general fund, we know, um, had been on the decline, and we kind of met rock bottom, and we're trying to work our way out of that, so you see that there. ARPA, I told you, this year we had our bank interest that actually put some fund balance in there. Um, opioid is a new fund, so obviously there's no other bars there. Um, and our other governmental has seen some fluctuation, um, compared to the prior year, and indifference is that, um, last year, the road patrol had to use three hundred thousand dollars worth of fund balance, so it decreased that fund balance. This year, they had a bigger millage and didn't have to do that. Um, yeah, that's the main thing there. Then in the, uh, the transfer slide, on slide thirteen, um, this is where I just pass five years' worth of what we've been having to transfer to the general fund. Um, and the one that we're the most concerned with is that tax umbrella, um, transfer. And if you look in, not in the graph part, but just below it, uh, I calculated the average growth in those delinquent tax revolving funds since two thousand fifteen, and it's just over four hundred thousand, so if you transfer more than that, then you're depleting those funds essentially. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to see the progress we've made on that, we're decreasing it. And Tim tells me that budget-wise, we're planning to decrease that by twenty-five to zero, so that would be great. Uh, this year, we were well under that four hundred thousand, so there's growth in those funds right now. But the, the more we can stay away from those and let them grow, the more interest they'll earn for us as these rates are going up. Um, so that's important to just stay aware of and, and stay on top of, and I think, um, Tim and Karen are doing a good job of, of being aware of that. Um, jumping to our enterprise or business-type funds, the ending net position of the transit was just over one point six million. This increased three hundred forty thousand. Of that, uh, of that one point six million, almost two hundred thousand is tied up in your fixed assets. The, the net value of those and the rest, the one point four million is unrestricted. That umbrella fund is sitting at, uh, five point seven, five point seven million, um, which was a decrease for that fund. However, the other delinquent tax funds didn't have any transfers, so they were able to build. Um, and as you know, those eventually, over time, dump into that tax umbrella fund. The two thousand twenty-two delinquent tax is a new fund, every year we have a new delinquent tax fund, um, and that ended at a hundred thirty, almost a hundred thirty-seven thousand. And our other non-major enterprise funds ended at almost two point three million, and they had increases of uh, four hundred fifty thousand, so that's where those other delinquent tax funds are kind of housed, where I'm saying there was an increase. And there is, some of that is tied up with fixed assets, a hundred forty-two thousand, and the rest is unrestricted. Same thing with those business-type enterprise funds, three-year comparisons, you can kind of just see, um, the transit is, is continuing to show positive direction, and the, uh, the other enterprise funds for those liquid tax revolving funds are, showed a decent amount of growth, growth this year. Stepping back to the general fund again, but looking at revenue and expense, this just shows you the first set of bars is for revenue, and the second is for expenses. Um, you can just see how that has gone up each year, but so like, the revenue and the expense together have gone up. Um, and I do want to note with that, um, with that graph, it looks pretty extreme, however, it starts at ten million. So it's just to give you a better view of the change, it's not as extreme as that looks. General fund revenues, specifically three-year comparison by type, um, you can see property taxes had a jump this year, that's big increase in values. Um, it's kind of hard to see, but contributions from other governments did go up this year. Um, the main cause of that is an additional school resource officer that we got reimbursed for. Um, that's, everything else is pretty, pretty consistent. The pie chart to give you a breakdown of what are our main sources of revenue, and you can see property taxes at almost sixty percent is obviously the biggest. Um, charges for service, thirteen, state grants, twelve. Um, and then transfers in of almost ten percent. Same thing then for expenses, a three-year first by, um, department, if you will, more generalized departments. Um, pretty consistent across the board, the majority of the increase is payroll-related. As time, each year we've given raises, and of course, retirement expense never gets cheaper.
Right.
The pie chart for the breakdown, you can see that public safety is our biggest, uh, category with almost thirty-five percent of the pie. General government, twenty-eight, and judicial at fifteen. Then, still on general fund expenses, but looking at it a different way, um, instead of departmentally by type of expense. Uh, so you can see kind of the patterns there, pretty consistent across the board, aside from payroll going up over the past three years, payroll and benefits. Uh, pie chart for that same thing, showing you that payroll and, uh, related expenses are over sixty percent of the pie, um, which is very common with the government.
Yeah.
Um, in fact, that might even be low for a lot of governments that I, that I work with. Purchase service, I guess if you add that into that, this is similar type of, uh, thing. So that's another almost eleven percent. I also have a slide in there that I've had in there for a few years for the probate childcare, just to show you kind of the sources. The first bar is expenditures, the middle is what we get from the state, and then the green is, uh, what the general fund has to transfer in, so you can kind of see just how that shakes out. Um, which it looks like if you stacked the two, the pink and the green, it'd be pretty close, close to the blue. Whereas if you look three years ago, we had a bunch of transfers when they're really, we did, probably didn't need that much. Um, that's just what was budgeted, so that's what, what we ended up doing. The next slide, jail revenue expense analysis. Um, the blue bar is revenue, the pink is expenses. Um, and then our little abbreviation, PCPD, under each bar is prisoner cost per day. Um, for this year, it was sixty-seven dollars per day per prisoner. Um, last year it was seventy-one, so that's a good direction. Uh, we're still not quite where we were five years ago at just under fifty dollars per day, but obviously, costs change over time. Uh, and that AIPD is average inmates per day, for your reference. After the financials, we get into the notes, those we can add page thirty of the bottom report. Important ones to note, we did implement GASB ninety-six. Last year, we did GASB eighty-seven, where we put the leases onto the balance sheet. This year, it's um, very similar, except it's your intangible things, like that you have subscriptions to, for instance, things like Microsoft Office, um, all sorts of softwares that would fall under this. Um, we analyzed them, none of them were material enough to actually book onto the balance sheet, um, even in aggregate. Um, but we did have to evaluate that. Contingencies and commitment footnote, uh, there are, there is litigation out there, as you're aware, um, and at this point, unknown, um, not expected to be material consequences from those. Um, and the board has one commitment that was material enough to put into the report for the, uh, the pole frame building at the transit for almost four hundred forty thousand. We also had a prior period adjustment note, which we probably will have almost every year, um, especially for a couple of these things. Um, the first being the, um, for the transit, we have to close out old grants that, that have a due from state sitting out there, and the way that works is we calculate what that due from state is with the audit. It sits out there, money comes in, um, over time, and then by the time the state runs out of money for that, that pot of, of whatever it is, they say, okay, it's closed out. You don't get usually ever exactly what the audit had said. It's based on the funding availability and what everybody else, um, shows on their reports as well. So there was one grant we had to close out, small, I think it was less than a thousand dollars. Prior period adjustment two, this year, we had to capitalize additional costs in the park fund. Um, with the audit last year, half of the fence costs got capitalized. Realized it at the audit this year and had to add those back and the rest of the cost, um, to capitalize those. Prior period three, prior period adjustment To capitalize those, prior period three, prior period adjustment three is the, another one that will probably recur. As this is just closing that, the the three years ago, or I guess four years ago. The length of tax revolving fund into the tax umbrella, we have to show the prior pretty good stuff to move that money. Um, after the notes is required supplement information, so we have some pension and OPEB stuff there. Uh, the thing I like to highlight there is the funding percentage, this year that dipped down to seventy-one percent, or it was seventy-nine last year. I do expect that to go back up next year. Um, I can't predict what all else they're going to throw into their equation, but as far as the interest earning side. The year since, so. The way it's calculated is based on their December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two valuation. So we're kind of. A year and a and a quarter behind at least. Well, since then, the market has has done better, so I do expect the interest earnings to reflect. To reflect that in our liability to hopefully go down next year. OPEB, we don't fund it, so that's been at zero, it'll be at zero. Also in the required supplementary information is our budget schedules. I'm not going to read the numbers to you there, but I want to focus on the variances. I like to see variance percentages less than five percent. Because that tells me that you're actually using the budget for a management tool and not just throw numbers on the paper and call it a good. And our revenues were within point three seven percent, and our expenses were within one point three six percent, so. Great job on that. After the required supplementary is just regular old self-assembly. And this is where we put all of those non-major funds. Uh, listed out individually, come to a total which aggregates, or which is thrown into the front. Um, and also our component unit. Schedules are back there for the drain and the EDC. And we also have some required um, disclosures and 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 schedules for the transit that we put back there. So that's the audit report. Also, we have, we had to do a single audit this year. Pretty uh. Quickly on that, actually, we have one slide about it. Because you spent more than, or expended more than seven hundred fifty thousand in federal awards. You're required to have a single audit, you guys actually had almost two point two million. And. We're required to get forty percent coverage, as in we have to test forty percent of that two point two million. Uh, and we were able to cover that with just the ARPA. Do you see there, it says tested Corona relief, coronavirus relief local, that's ARPA. So that gave us our, that gave us forty-six percent plenty of coverage, and there was no issues found with that. Separate single audit, so. Great job with that. Let me get into our management letter, which is the loosely enclosed letter at the back of the big bond report. Um, our first has two appendix appendices, the first being the more canned. Accounting lingo, if you want to say. Talks about that we did implement Gatsby ninety-six. It also mentions that there are significant estimates as a part of this report, and that is. Our OPEB and net pension liability, those are estimates, we don't know when people are going to pass or retire. Uh, what interest rates are going to do, it's a huge calculation that the actuary does, um, so that's just noted there. To be clear. Difficulties encountered, if there were any, we could disclose it there, uh, there were none. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements, all of the misstatements that uh, did not get made were immaterial, there were a couple of them. All of the material misstatements were corrected with journal entry. Uh, disagreements with management, we didn't have any, uh, management provided all the representations to us to say that. Everything they provided us was true and accurate to their best knowledge, they weren't withholding anything from us. Consultations with other accountants, none, that's really specifically about. Trying to get a better audit opinion, if you went to another auditor to say. Well, can you do it and give us a better opinion, that didn't happen, we gave, and actually must have glossed over that point. The whole point that we do the audit is for that letter in the front. Where we tell you. Is this information accurate? And we once again were able to provide an unmodified opinion. Uh, and that's to say that. Everything in here is accurate within material constraints, so. Yeah, we don't test every transaction, so we can't guarantee everything. But we have materialities and and different tests to try to determine. Is this accurate within reason, and yes, it is. No other issues outside of appendix two. So then appendix two is where we have our. Comments, recommendations, things of that sort, uh, and there's different levels of those comments that we can give. Material weakness i- is something. Is an area where if if something went wrong, it could be material to the financial statements, that's not to say anything did go wrong, it's just saying. There's an opportunity there, um, and we. Um, had financial statement preparation there once again. And this is that one that I mentioned last year. Is. Completely allowable, and it's more of a disclosure, uh, but because there's material journal entries, we have to classify it as a material weakness. So that's to say, because you're relying on us to prepare the financial statements. There is a chance that we make a mistake and you don't catch it, essentially. But we do. Work with Tim and Karen throughout and and provide them with a draft for them to review, which they did. To kind of uh, mitigate that risk. So a step down from material weakness is a significant deficiency, um, similar, except it wouldn't be as severe if if something went wrong. And we do have one of those this year for the district court cash reconciliations. Um, which you guys are probably pretty aware of what was going on with the district court, you had that internal or. Whatever it was, that separate audit. Um, where they uncovered quite a few things, and I think um. It sounds like Danielle is is working on that diligently and and might have gotten most of it already. Fixed. Um, but during the audit, we noted that the treasurer wasn't receiving those reconciliations from the district court. So you'll see that finding in there. Other comments, so these are. Less severe, not not less important, but they wouldn't cause. As material of an issue if anything happened here. A repeat finding from last year on nature park cash receipts. Uh, that was essentially the controls there are really lacking as far as cash collections, there's not really. Things to prevent potential or. I don't want to say it that way, because you don't want to. Uh, think badly of people, but more so, there's not anything there to protect the people doing that work. From people accusing them of wrongdoing, so that's one way to look at controls is not only does it prevent. Uh, theft. Fraud, whatever ha- what have you. It also is there to protect your employees to say, it's not possible for them to have stolen, because they follow these controls. So that's important. Again, it's still in there, so. Things to overcome with that, uh, the second one, also a repeat, but it was an approved finding. The budget control, last year we had it where the budget in the software. Didn't match, and there wasn't, the amendments weren't making it to that software, and it wasn't posted on the website. This year it was just the very final. Um, amendment, didn't make it into the software by the time I pulled it for the audit, so. Progress there, and and I have no question that that will be fixed. For next year. Um, the next one, sheriff department fundraising, so this year we, we did a test on the uh. The fundraising done for the K nine unit. And similar to the nature park, there's just a lack of control over that, the cash receipting process. One of the biggest things in both, in both scenarios, one of the biggest controls that you can implement that's pretty simple is using a lockbox or a lock bag. Where you receive the cash, it goes into that, and you can't unlock it until you take it to the treasurer's office and deposit it. They have a key there to open it, that type of thing would really. Help. Prevent any questions, really. Also with with that type of fundraising where you're selling, in this case like t-shirts. It's a good idea to be able to say, we bought a hundred t-shirts. We sold ninety of them, we should have X amount of dollars deposited, kind of a double check to 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 verify the completeness of that deposit there. So that's that one. How I didn't take it off of this. You probably see, do you see one on yours that says budgeted deficit? Yeah, that is not, that was not the case, I was mistaken on that one, so you can cross that one out, that did not make the letter. The only other one was the payroll tracking controls, this was a finding last year, uh, last year it contained. An issue of. Certain employees being allowed to. Bank more than their max allowed in their union contract, uh, that has been fixed since with uh. Getting used to that overtime system, that piece is fixed. The other piece that was there and still remains there is that there are. Uh, the sheriff and jail still aren't using that time system for clocking in and clocking out, uh, my understanding is that is that there's. That is their decision, uh, however, that opens up human error, uh, so I I want to have that in there to disclose. That is. A potential um, control improvement you could make. So then, uh, the status of those prior years, I kind of already talked about all of these actually, uh, financial statement's still there. Uh, we decided to have us do it again. Payroll tracking, when I just talked about progress has been made, still not completely gone, nature park, uh, still the same as last year. And that bu- budget control progress have been made. So that's all. Bad news, if you want to look at it that way, but I I like to look at it as at least to just get better and and improve. The next slide is kind of just some good news I want to share that uh. There's been a pattern over the past. Couple of years where the journal entries are actually decreasing, so. That's huge, I I wanted to take the opportunity to show you. In number of journalizes, that last year it was seventy-three, this year it went down to fifty-seven hundred. And a a fairly good amount of those entries. Were going to have every year. But there's still is room for even more improvement, so. I'm encouraged.
What number do you think we shouldn't get?
Oh, I don't know, I didn't uh.
Thirty?
Thirty would be impressive, very impressive to me, yeah. I would be impressed by forty as well, um. I don't know, without going through each entry and analyzing, is this one that they could do?
Oh, well, you do another municipality, what?
Well, county is a different animal, but uh. The two counties that I have are similar, so I don't want to guess what a county should be. Our our smaller ones are less than twenty entries, but they have way less activity, it's not even worth comparing.
Questions? Thank you, questions, guys? Commissioner Scott?
Let me uh, let me go back through the.
I do have my contact in here, if you think of stuff after this.
On slide twenty-three, just a number that. Uh, probate, healthcare fund, is that, are it increased?
Oh, gosh, we're back in nineteen, is that what you're looking at?
From last year to this, yeah. It's one a thousand.
Yeah, I I don't have that in front of me to know exactly what that was, I know a lot of their expenditures are driven on. Um, how many kids are are in the juvenile facilities and the state requires you to pay. Whatever. Days that they are in that facility, so it's kind, you're kind of tied. To that, of course, some of that is probably payroll. But nowhere near the, the big amount of the change I'm sure is. The juvenile contract with the state.
We were hoping to see a reduction in that with the. Daytime treatment center. By looking at, yeah, by looking at this, there's. That's not the case, am I looking at this?
Michael went here, because there's a distinction between what we're doing across the street and a lot of things that the state's reimbursing us for. Two different classes, I guess, of uh, juvenile, so he'd really. Be be here to explain that to us in great detail.
Well, no, I I don't, I'm going to disagree with that, because the the blue line is expenditures, the red is state and other reimbursements. There is a pretty big increase from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three and expenditures alone. So I don't, I'm not looking at the state and what the reimbursements are, I'm just looking at the overall. Expenditures.
Again, Michael would be the. Subject matter in that category.
Commissioner Scott, did you locate your questions?
Well, I got to respect to look at it. No, that's fine, I'll.
You have my info there and. Know where we live.
As far as the, did you get, Commissioner Simmons, did you have any questions?
No. Good, good things we just brought up though, that's good.
Tim, did you, and I know you guys have talked about, you had some concerns, had them been. Voice, do you have anything to add to this?
I don't affect uh. Nathan worked very closely with us this year, and any questions I had going in, we really. Knocked them out of the box, in fact, we met last week, and I had a bunch of questions ready to go after I'd seen the draft audit. And Nathan had every one of them before I even had to ask it, so you know, it was all. Clarified.
I I gotta look at this obviously closer as well, but it it almost looks like like the opioid. Money coming in, those are restricted funds, but it almost. Appears by a a quick glance that we're in better financial shape than we actually are, because those are not funds that. We can actually utilize.
And and that, as far as the the government wide side of things, where I said there was, what was it, over four million increase, yeah, four point seven million increase. The vast majority of that is that opioid that you are tied to that restriction. The increase of what you can actually use is less. But it's great, I mean, that's an important thing, and. Just to. Hopefully you can defray some costs, find things like, you know, like the sting this year, we were able to to classify into that fund, that helps. Everything helps that you can classify there, as long as it meets. Those requirements.
Karen, did you have anything?
No, um, I met with Nathan last week as well, Tim, Nathan and I met together and, no, Nathan answered all my questions and. I'm happy that he included the negative cash and the negative fund balance, because I feel that's very important, I've been mentioning, mentioning it to you every month. Cash is king in a financial crisis, and it is something you'll need to address, and I beg you to please use your ARPA funds to correct that going forward. Let's get rid of that negative cash, so we can operate with positive cash like we should be, that will be easily reported to the state.
I I got a quick question on this management letter appendix two, there is, Tim, I guess you could probably, is that a separate audit done with the district court cash reconciliations?
They, that was part of what they looked at through that audit, um, and you may recall the uh, uh, management letter there that. Lined out some of these deficiencies in the reply uh, from the district court, and so many of those. Bindings were already addressed, I mean, they literally got on those immediately. And so with the the bank recs, for instance, uh, adjustments were made, the treasurer's office is now involved receiving. You know, the information about those bank recs when they happen, so much, I think. Better uh, system for the checks and balances that we really needed. A lot of the other things that were in that audit pertains specifically to the district court and the processes they follow. Uh, they have to comply with what the state court administrator wants to see, so those are things we would never see here anyway. Uh, and that's all well and good, but again, very impressive progress already made, and I'm very confident they're going to knock all those things out within. You know, a short period of time.
I think the biggest. Thing though, the question I had coming into this was the handling of cash, we covered that very well. Uh, do you, you feel that? We had Mayor Costerman come in and. Do a lot of work with us on cash and handling of. You think that panned out for us?
I think that probably shed a lot of light on different areas to to work on, I think. Another big, big thing as far as what I've noticed is just your admin team. Has has taken just care and want to get things right and get it on the right footing, so. Um, that's encouraging, um, I told them in the meeting. Last week, I was excited that there was people that actually went through this report. And had actual questions, and it wasn't just, looks good. You know, so I. I'm encouraged by that with your admin team, that there's actually, they care about it and they want it to be right. That's probably your biggest difference to me.
Like uh. Like the budget uh, entries and things like that, I mean, that's staying on top of it. Because I think prior to that report, when you go back into the eighteen nineteen, I think. They were in the hundreds. You guys were coming in doing things, right?
Yeah, oh, the the entries.
Prior, prior.
Also with standards, it changes too. So back, if you go really far back, there's way less standards, so probably less entries. But today with the standards we have, seeing, and that's why I kind of only included three years because things change so much. That's really where you can see that pattern is in the recent years.
Okay.
I, uh, under general fund revenues, do tickets fall underneath fines, forfeits, interest and rentals at only zero point six eight percent? Is that where like?
Why does that?
Slide are you on? Eighteen. I'm sorry.
I couldn't look at that. I would assume so. Um it could also be under charges for service.
That's a little big, bigger. That's thirteen percent.
I'm pretty confident it's the fines forfeits here.
I would think so.
Zero point six eight percent? Wow.
Yeah, it's tough when you're working with such big numbers like your property taxes. You know, I think property taxes were over seven, I was just over here, seven million. So anytime you throw even a hundred thousand, that's seven million. You're not gonna have a very big percentage there.
Our taxes really increased this year.
Yes, values are up.
Yeah, I see that.
Where I go, including my own statement.
Any other questions?
Um, I don't have a question, just a statement. So this is my second audit here with the county. And I think it's just obviously, you know, when you start seeing these real numbers and you understand the situation that we're at, you know, a lot of people wondering why we have to try to make these hard decisions and the decisions ahead of us. Even Nathan said, I mean, they have a rainy day fund. On average, you'd like to have twenty percent of your expenses. I mean, even if we had ten percent, I mean, it's proof. We have, we have nothing.
Right.
You're in the hall. We we had zero.
We have less than zero.
Very, very nerve wracking.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are you coming back next week?
No, we had to approve it.
Yeah, I'll have that on the agenda for next week if you do that.
Is that enough time? Do we have to do it by next week? Is that enough time for everybody to look it over?
File it by the end of the month and next week gives us like the day.
Yeah. Wow.
Sure, it's filed.
Okay. Item B, Brian Gilbert Sheriff related to, you got corrections officer position recall and seasonal positions or V and Marine. Going up, guys? Good evening.
Good evening.
Beginning of next month, we're gonna be short a correction officer. One's moving on. Put his letter in, see if they're employment. Actually, it's gonna get out of correctional services. Uh, with that in mind, we're asking that we continue our recall notice on the ones that we laid off. So we get the next one in line to come back and fulfill that position.
Absolutely.
When this is going to occur?
Well, I think this is the last day.
So this is just filling a vacant position. I don't see a reason why not. Questions? Comments? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many inmates?
Seasonal.
Alright.
Fifty, I think they didn't look.
Fifty total?
Fifty some. I don't, I didn't look.
How many ask over that roughly?
I didn't look at all. I was in quarantine.
Seasonal positions, ORV and Marine?
Um, just looking for some um, some support to move forward to that with our seasonal workers to continue that with our grants.
You're you're a hundred, it's a hundred percent great, covered, correct?
Yeah, it's fulfill the ORV grant and uh, Marine just to, just to move forward on that.
So you, it's bringing back the previous workers?
Yeah.
We just gotta be cautious with you, how they were laid off and we don't want to run into any problems there.
Part-time seasonal.
And and we've already got
Yeah.
money coming in or they, the promise letters or whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Correct, Tim?
And then this, seasonals aren't subject to that. They're actually excluded in the contract and they're tied directly to the grants that I'll receive.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I do add a lot of the townships. Um, ORV is, is a a hot topic.
Top some.
It is. A lot of complaints there. Thank you.
We have one new seasonal hire.
Pardon me?
We're gonna add another seasonal too. So we have a DPW worker for the city of West Branch. So just to clarify, it's to recall the part-time seasonals for the May first start. We're also actually gonna add another part-time to that list.
It's all, it's all grant covered.
All covered under ORV and Marine.
Yeah.
What did we get this year? Was it the five thousand?
For
The grants?
Uh, ORV's eleven.
Oh.
And then we're still waiting for the Marine grant number to come in.
So we don't know that one yet?
We have an agreement with Lake Ogama Association?
I haven't met with them yet, but I'm sure it'll be the same. I'm sure of it.
What was the other lake that was talking about it? With you, you were at that meeting, Sheriff?
Peach Lake was wanting some.
I think it was Sage.
Given a patrol there, uh, but yeah.
They wanna pay?
They don't wanna pay.
They don't want to pay.
Sage Lake it was. You were up at the Hill Township.
We were up there. Uh, we don't have a contract with them, but we have, you know, we got several marine officers that we spread out. Make sure we have, we cover that open, like Ogum up because we're being paid there. So we make sure we give them the hours. And then the extra hours will, will, will go north and take.
We still got the jet skis? Or did we sell them?
No, we still have them. Uh, the the two that we're gonna sell. I think we were waiting on the titles, but I believe we got the titles back from them. So if we can turn them around, it'll it'll put some money in the coffers to take care of.
We still got two boats though?
Pardon me?
We have two boats?
Yes.
And we're gonna sell the jet skis.
Well, we have, I I believe we have four jet skis. We're gonna get rid of two of the ones before and then
Oh.
That is what the plan was. So I gotta get with Chris on that. He's been kind of off for a little bit. Okay, we gotta reconnect with him.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item five, a HVAC service agreement.
This is uh
So it was you, I guess.
What?
This is to do with your department.
HVAC service agreement.
Oh, yeah. So this is what Johnson and Wood mechanical contractors. Um, we um would renew this for three years at twenty-two hundred dollars a year. And the new part to this is it's not just for the county building, but for the same price, they're gonna go ahead and take care of the jail as well. So um, it's, I I think quite a bonus to us. I mean, I think we're getting a better value for the twenty-two hundred a year. And it's here because it is a contract and does require more approval, but it would be for three years.
So what are we currently doing for the jail if we're not utilizing this?
Uh, probably on call. So if something happens, Chris just calls, probably these same people, but then you're paying an hourly rate when they're over there.
So is this just some maintenance?
It is, um, and they'll with the uh, boilers, for instance, I mean, I believe they're people that are in charge when there's time for an inspection of making sure it's everything's functional.
Well, in the list here, list of maintained equipment, it says county building, two boilers, two pumps, and old jail building, two boilers.
No, that's not how it was presented to me. And I don't think there are boilers in that building, are there?
Yeah, I did.
It was at one time.
There's two in our building, our sheriff's office building. I'll clarify with Chris. So there's definitely no for sure. We don't hate the backside of the old jail, right? We shut that off, but.
Well, there's not even bikes anymore, is there?
A lot of places are not. I know they were done out, so. Probably not.
What are we currently paying for this? You said just say the name.
Two hundred.
Okay, so it's just a continuation with hopefully some more services.
Somewhere.
I doubt it. Questions? Thanks, guys. Thank you. Seamless DAX renewal?
Seamless DAX is the software that we use for a lot of the forms we do. If you fill out a FOIA form, for instance, from our webpage, it goes through the Seamless DAX system. Does a great job for us in terms of uh, putting all of the, you know, various forms that we have on a spreadsheet. Uh, you see the personnel action request forms frequently where there are increases in pay or new hires or what have you. It's all part of that system. Uh, this is the last year of a three-year agreement that we did. But then for this year, the total cost is nine thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and cents. It's actually about six hundred dollars less than the current year. Uh, so this um, uh, will continue everything else that we've got going on. We can add forms, take forms off, do any modifications we like. Uh, I think it certainly has improved our efficiency uh, since we've had it.
Questions?
This is the last year of the contract, you said?
Yes.
Uh, I think it's worked well.
Especially during COVID and yeah, absolutely.
COVID, incidentally, when we had to do those daily check-ins, we used this system for it and they were very impressed after our first year. That form alone produced more than ten thousand entries. So employees were really doing it. They were very um consistent about checking in when they came into the valley. Now, today we'd say that probably was overkill, but it really did test the system immediately and proved to us that, you know, definitely was working.
Which is nice because we see everything that comes through, keeps us up to date on things.
That'd be ten thousand sheets of paper.
I think communication is
If it was not
Right.
kept and
Right.
It would be, if it had to be printed out every time.
So I guess this is
The minimum, ten thousand.
This is looking at nine thousand one hundred ninety-three thousand eighty cents for, are are you looking for this isn't a price for another three-year contract, correct? This is just for this year. Okay, so do we have a plan moving forward for the next?
Well, we'll, we'll talk to them next year. They've actually been bought out by something called Go Gov. Now, Seamless DAX is just a, a small part of everything they're doing. I'm hoping that means they'll be able to lower our prices. But they'll probably be looking at a three-year agreement again and uh, hopefully some additional bells and whistles, most of which we probably won't use, but uh, things that are in there that maybe can help some of our forms. Uh, there's some receiving uh uh, functions that they do now. I'm thinking might even be good for building inspections to do since they're out in the field, but they're ads now anyway. Uh, so there there potentially some other things we'll be able to do with it. Uh, I'm not aware of too many others that are out there that do it quite like this. I mean, one of the nice things for us, uh, we get a spreadsheet showing anything that's that's been entered. So those ten thousand COVID forms, there's a spreadsheet. If we need to go what, uh, look at what employee Doe did, we can scan it and it's there. We don't have to go hunting through files and looking through papers or anything like that.
Well, this is where all the new hires, the pay increases, everything.
Right.
There's, I'm just surprised with the new systems of ESNA and all this Nova Time and all this, the one of them systems can't do this. I don't
Somehow I had, I have to go in and enter at each individual employee. There's not a way to stop import the union scale. We tried to look at a little bit with Nova Time. It didn't seem to flow very well.
I mean, I think this works great, but nine thousand dollars is nine thousand dollars and we're paying a lot of money for those other programs. I just would have thought that it was pretty simple from what we see on our end, just the the printout or the, you know, like.
Yeah, I can, I have no problem. Maybe ask him Peter next time we have a
So, I don't know, I don't know the time, time card thing we can ask.
It's just a different kind of a focus that they're doing with recording the hours, you know, employees, and that's all they're doing right now. And then that just gets converted to BSNA, but why, maybe BSNA has something, I don't know.
I I would think so. Again, I like seeing the information. I think it's great. We're not making these copies. I think it's time-saving. It leaves it up to the individuals to fill out, but I would just think that one of these other systems should have this capability for nine thousand dollars, but anyways, anything else, guys? Okay. Uh, West Branch Township lease amendment, I guess. Tim, how did this appear on here? What 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 took place?
We got an email from the township that said, we've talked to our attorney and we'd like you to consider these changes. Uh, this is just an offshoot again. We've been talking about here for about the last year to year and a half about uh uh, this particular complex. And I remember we first started discussing this and and we're trying to decide, is there a liability to us? And is this some liability that we should have? And we talked about uh, making an outright sale to the township. Last conversation we had, we ended up uh, saying, you know, the lease is fine. We'll just stick with the lease. And the township's uh, it literally sent an email and asked if the county would consider these changes. Uh, based on what we've heard here tonight and based on our immediate history and the confusion with it, I'd suggest that might be a good idea if we invite the township to a meeting and just talk this through with the township directly. Uh, it might be better if there were a subcommittee of this board that did that, or we could do it in another committee, the whole meeting, or uh, something along those lines. But I, I'm thinking that there's, there's been a lot of talking back and forth, but not directly to each other. And I think that might help clear a lot of this up.
I think
Good questions that were raised here tonight. I don't know the origin of the uh, recreation uh, center and how they were mentioned in the original lease to begin with. Uh, they're not a signature on the lease. Uh, we've got the township and the county and that's it. So that's kind of odd too. But then we'd have to jump in the time machine and go back twenty years to figure out why that is. I I just don't know.
We've been talking about this for, for quite some time, and I think that this impacts all, where these properties are, impacts a lot of individuals in, in, in uh Ogumaw County. I I think it needs to be, we'll invite both of them back at the next meeting. It needs to be for the general public to hear, not in a subcommittee, in my personal opinion.
Yeah, but it's whatever you prefer. I'd agree with that.
Commissioner Simmons?
Uh, my understanding is a lot of grant, grants were involved in approving that property up there, is my understanding. And of course, with grants, there are laws that uh, affect these grants. And I think we need to look into those too, because when you're given a grant, there are um limitations on those grants. And what has to be done of it is goes to someone else. And I I do not know what that law is on this particular grant. And I think that needs to be researched also. You know, what laws are applicable to these grants that were, that were given to Ogumaw Rec.
Commissioner Scott?
I'll go on to you, the wide open meeting.
Yeah, there's been a lot of confusion along with, somebody needs to do some serious diving into all of this. Uh, Commissioner, what's he?
Um, yeah, when I, first I was thinking subcommittee, but now that I'm thinking about it, it is an important topic. It's beautiful ground. That you guys came here tonight to talk to us about it. Bottom line is we need to get all the stakeholders at the table. Bring a CPW meeting. I don't care if it takes an hour, hour and a half. We gotta just sit down, gotta get this figured out. We can go, so we can have in the right direction.
You don't know really why this was brought to your attention?
Off the top of my head, I don't. I know there was some discussion, and again, I'm not hearing this even directly from the township, but there's been some discussion about the involvement of their recreation committee at the township level as well, which is where I think uh I think of his name, our transit uh
Mike Durfee.
Mike Durfee was, was talking about. He was on a committee with the township. Uh, and it just added a whole layer of complexity to me. I I don't know what their structure is, how how it works. And I think the only way we're gonna get to the bottom of it is the township board rep is actually sitting here and we can ask. And Commissioner Simmons brings up a very good point. If there are restrictions on some grants, uh, it'll also be important to know too, not that it would necessarily be the county that would end up on the business end of some action, uh, unless we were the ones who took the grant, and I don't even know that.
Um
We also need, sorry, go ahead.
I'm not sure that either. I was gonna say something else, but I'm, um, I'll wait.
We also need to make sure that the information that is brought in front of everybody is factual information.
Right.
So we need data to back that up, not uh, just verbiage. But it sounds like these guys were caught off guard. I'm kind of surprised by this.
Yeah, I am too.
Sounds like um
Everybody is.
A poor tactic to do to not notify the person that's involved in this.
Well, who was at the West Branch Township meeting? Which one of the, who serves on it? Who serves them? Do you?
I didn't know this was brought up at the West Branch Township all meetings. When I was there, I don't remember that.
I would have thought it would have been.
That's the last one. I can't tell.
I know, no, I do not remember.
Okay.
I do not remember that.
So there'll be more to come.
First I've heard of it and I heard it through the grapevine. And soon as I heard it, I thought, whoa, that's not us.
Can we make sure we put this on the next committee of the whole and make sure all, all parties are invited and uh, transit mileage?
We had a meeting on it, the transit committee today. I don't want to, so to speak, on a turn, but there are commissioners who are on the committee. But there's a discussion particularly focused on the error that was brought to our attention at the last meeting by the state in terms of their reimbursement level, which was reduced by about ten percent. Uh, which is significant dollars to the uh, transit budget. Uh, we were originally talking about a point seven five. The committee today was talking about even asking for a full mill to help make up for that shortfall now that we're gonna see at the state. Rick, I don't remember the deadline. The reason why this is on here tonight is that I think we've got a deadline coming up to make the August ballot. Uh, so we wanted to keep it in front of us until we were settled on whatever number we wanted, put the language together and bring it back. settled on whatever number we wanted, put the language together and bring it back.
How to find my icon. I changed my icons today.
Wow.
Baby.
One of the villages got dropped off, correct? Or is getting dropped off because of it, it, it expired and we didn't renew? So you're looking though, so there's going to be one village remaining for the transit, is that correct?
Yes.
New village.
You're looking at a new village, not a renewal.
Yes.
Increase in the one. So with all, was there two or three? There's two, right?
Two, two, there were.
So with what you guys are talking about doing, is it a combination of both? It's not an actual increase, but it's going to be a combination. So they, it expires at one time and not with the confusion of.
Well, one, one has expired, so we would like to have that money back.
That's what I.
Yeah.
That was your short version of what I just said, yes.
But it was, weren't, weren't, wasn't it two quarter mil?
I can't remember right now.
Point, point two five? Point two five mills?
I can't remember.
Each?
Well, I think what I wish to read more here.
I'll find it.
So yeah, that's my question. Is it just a combination of both of them or are we trying?
Sounds like a combination and more.
That's what my question is.
Well, it was a point seven five, but we'd like to have that one mill because of the shortfall being reimbursed. And if, because this is going to put us in the negative. We're going to be in the red.
We have no control over the reimbursement and Ray does believe it's going to continue to decline from the state.
Yep, so that, this would put us fifty thousand dollars in the hole, maybe a little more.
Uh, Ray said this morning that what was it, six, seven years ago, we were getting fifty percent?
Yeah.
Now this year with the misinformation that they gave us, now we're going to be thirty, thirty percent?
Yeah.
Thirty percent.
Both of those villages were, last time they were both levied were point two nine nine seven.
Point three, point three.
And you want to go from six, point six to one full mil?
Yes, because of the degrees of the state funding. Because if, if we don't, we will be in the red.
Brock just said April thirty.
So we got a little time. For that's. April thirtieth.
Was it slated?
Because we would like to keep the same services that we have right now.
August. It was slated for August.
And, uh, without, without the increase, the services may be reduced.
This is for a three-year or five? What are we talking about?
Talked about that.
There's a very big.
And I would suggest it'd be a year or so. We keep it on a year when there's already an election. We don't have to pay for the action.
So four years.
Four.
Yeah.
But we also have talked about not having everything come up in four years.
So maybe six, I don't know.
I just left EMS board meeting and I would.
What is the same right now?
Questions that we're going to have.
For you, is what should we own?
Again.
You know, just so we don't, in four years, I was thinking, what we have right now. All these villages, you know, facing us all at one time, so.
Thank you. More to come on that?
Is there any verbiage right now? The proposed verbiage yet for the, for the, um, millage for the transit? Okay, thanks. I wanted to know.
Item E, annex building access controls.
Hey, since our last meeting, I've had a few conversations. I sat down with, uh, nine one one director and, uh, I am absolutely confident they're probably about as secure as they're going to get with the doors they have and the cameras they have on the outside. Now again, that's specifically for nine one one. That's not the entire building. Um, we then put a, uh, call out to all of our department heads in this building, asked if they had any concerns. Uh, from, uh, two departments today that really weren't able to think of any. I think we've got some people in the audience here tonight that can maybe, uh, express what, any concerns that they might have. Now, we did have a conversation about animals in the building and I did take a picture this morning of the sign that we have on the county building and it's, it's pretty, uh, it's brief, but I think to the point. It says, uh, service animals are working animals now pets. The worker tasked dog or animal has, uh, to be trained to provide, uh, right for directly related to the person's disability. Dogs whose sole function is to provide comfort or emotional support do not qualify as a service animal under E D A. A doctor's letter does not turn an animal into a service animal. And then above that's a very, uh, uh, even more succinct sign is the service dog required because of a disability. What work or task is the dog been profane, uh, trained to do? If you can't answer these two questions and reference to your service animal, they will not be allowed in the county building. Uh, this I think is from, uh, you know, it doesn't say that, so I don't want to say where it came from. It's not necessarily a policy of the county. It may be a court policy that had those up. But we had concern in our conversation here a week or so ago about animals in this building. What would we do? And I would suggest that we be consistent with what's up in the other building. And if it's a truly a service animal, yes. If it's an emotional support animal, no, that's, that's completely different category. Uh, we also had talked about access controls. And the issue that comes to mind right away here is we've got, uh, you know, primary traffic. Uh, generators for this building, we have extension, we have planning and zoning, we have our building inspections. And there's a lot of traffic coming in and out of here for those services, people needing permits, needing, uh, maybe something with four H or whatever it might be. So keying the door probably is not an option. That's to say that our employees would have swipe cards and they'd be the other ones to be able to get in. Just isn't going to work. It's not practical. They do have a system up here, as I'm sure you've seen when you came in, that if you needed, uh, a building permit, there's a button you push and it rings at the building inspectors and they come up or uh, maybe Colleen directs them there, uh, when she's sitting there. Uh, but as far as putting, uh, you know, some of the security mechanism, uh, not really sure what we do outside of putting a security person in the lobby. And I'm not sure that's even practical in these, in this building. Uh, for as much traffic as they get in and out of here, we get a lot more traffic on court days, uh, across the street, and I think it's really needed in that case, but where would we even put a security station in this building is, is another question. So I'm not sure how that would work out. Um, and, you know, I did ask for suggestions. I don't know if anybody here has any, uh, suggestions for the building. But that's, that's where the township has gone so far.
Like who's responsible for, for locking the, the front door tonight with, with this meeting? Who?
Well, I hate.
Responsible that night.
After this meeting, you make sure, because this is our meeting, so I take the responsibility for that. Uh, on a day-to-day, I don't know if it's, you know, they've got something worked out with the employees here. If it's the last person out of the building or if it automatically gets locked at four thirty, I don't know.
Can, can you guys come on up? So.
Yeah, sure.
Brian, you're here too? I don't know. Who else did I see? Nine one one's here as well. All right. First and foremost, other, has there been any security concerns?
I see none.
I don't know if there would be any securities concerns for.
Do you agree that the traffic flow has significantly increased since having these meetings over here?
They're at, well, during the day on your, your two-day ones, a little more, but not nothing really out of the ordinary, nothing we can't handle. They also have other classes here sometimes too. Nine one one does some fire department and
Right.
all different kinds of things. And that's always been going on.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, I.
And as far as cameras, there's cameras around the whole building.
We have seven cameras around the building. Nine one one does. There's five outside, two on the inside. The two on the inside, one is actually in dispatch. It's being recorded and one's the entry door into dispatch through the kitchen. They're always being recorded. And the five around the outside get every angle. They get the road. It does a lot of, a lot of good. So I don't see. I, I guess I don't understand where the security thing is coming into play too, because we're taking care of it.
Well, I think, yeah, obviously we are aware of an incident has occurred. Um, and we talked about in the nine one one meeting, um, that the traffic flow has significantly increased. It, it, it with, with us here. I agree. I walked in. I didn't know many, so many meetings were happening here. Um, just.
You know, it's just been scheduled through the years.
Right. Yeah, that's not a bad thing. I just, I didn't know the traffic flow was, was, was that high. I mean, obviously, uh, from a liability standpoint, just making sure that, that, that we're covered. Um, from a security standpoint. Making sure that everybody is safe or feels safe. Um, I, I, I wasn't thinking as far as putting a security, um, machine out there or to the extent of what we have over there. I think we're talking about two totally separate things, but I think we all wanted to know what security measures are being taken. Who's locking the building? Who's, who's responsible for the building?
Last time the building up, all of us employees will lock that door, whether it's Ryan's, probably most of the time, it's easier later than some, but if it's either me or M S U or.
Yeah.
Ryan.
So something to keep in mind is that, um, to some extent, our traffic from the public is seasonal. So more building projects um, in the warmer weather, um, although you've certainly not had a
No, it's been.
a low, you've not had a low season recently in the last year. And then we do check in with one another before we leave and that's just our common practice. Um, so, um, Riot will all talk to each other and I think that system works really well. Um, before we leave, we take a walk around. Um, and then as a failsafe, I know that the staff from nine one one will often, you know, after sort of business hours, they'll kind of do a circuit and they'll double check. They double check all of the doors. Um, sometimes we, if we're here, um, and it's after five, if I'm working late or, you know, I have to go to a fair board meeting, I might be working late. I lock the front door and then I leave from the door that exits through the, um,
Boiler room.
through the boiler room, because that locks after me and I always double check to make sure that door is secure after I exit. And I, I know I've talked to my staff this week, or at least since I got Tim's email and checked in with them and we all are following sort of a similar, like making sure the building is secure. Um, policy. I think the other thing to keep in mind is that Brian often arrives early and so does Craig because the tradespeople that need to see him are trying to get to their sites and get to the building department early. So this building opens sometimes earlier than eight A M. Um.
We open at seven, mostly morning.
Yeah, I mean, that depends on you all to open it up.
Right.
Um, but I don't think we've observed any challenges with people being in the building inappropriately. I mean, certainly we had like the same issue of constitutional auditors and we, you know, that was, uh, that was a different, um, that was a, a different, uh, engagement with the, with the people from the public than we had, but, you know, our, we're oriented to work with the public and, and welcome the public into our space. And so I don't think it's really a problem. Would also say like, we do have after-hours meetings here for four H. A staff member will always be here, um, to make sure that those groups are in and secure. We lock the building after all the participants are here and then, um, instruct them to exit through the boiler room as well. So we're doing our best to make sure that the building is secure and we're cognizant of the fact that nine one one is here twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So we do our best to make sure we're working in partnership to keep them safe as well.
Questions, commissioners? Do you have any question right here?
No, not for these.
Commissioner Scott.
Who does the scheduling for the room here?
It's online. Uh, if we, if someone needs to, they can call and talk to Colleen, but all the county employees have access to the online calendar, I believe.
Well, well, it used to be a person, but if it's online.
We used to have a book, now it's online, just like you were talking about the seat.
Three books.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We have three rooms and we have three, we had three books at one time. So, yeah.
Commissioner Willsey?
Uh, some of you guys have good communication and a system in place.
I, I think our job is also is from two different, safety obviously is one and then liability standpoint. I mean, we need to make sure that we're covered as much as we can possibly be covered to help us eliminate any further incidents.
Think the thing is, the thing is, this is not a finger-point thing. Somebody came up and asked about security, we do, we need to do our due diligence and make sure that you were safe. We want to make sure you're safe.
Yeah. Well, I was just surprised because we.
Follow me.
I didn't respond to.
No, I'm not following you.
How, even, even in these meetings, uh, we, we have some pretty tough topics and there's going to be some very difficult topics moving forward and, and people in today's mental health is, is a big concern. So there's even a safety concern or, or there could be moving forward even, even.
I deal with that a lot too. That's.
Saying that, if it.
Yeah, I hear that.
If it gets loud in here and the dispatchers hear that, they always call the sheriff's department, always. They do.
Unless there's five to eight-year-olds playing with Legos.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Which is, then we want to come play with them and we can't.
Right.
Okay. Anything else?
Final their nine one one date here.
Where do you plan, where do you plan on posting that related to the pets? Where do you plan on?
Right on the door.
On the front door?
Yeah. Uh, right on the glass. So it'll be maybe a little bit more obvious than what it is. Over the other building is a little low, I think, but, you know, it's, it's there.
It sounds pretty lengthy.
I can shorten it up.
Please.
It's on two pages. I'll have it on one.
Okay, so that covers what you, we talked about on nine one board.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
F Regional Juvenile Center.
I was, I'm talking with Commissioner Willsey the other day and we were just kind of wondering where the, the specialists. Over a year ago, we had a proposal to participate with a few other counties in a regional juvenile center. And we thought we'd poke around just to see what the progress has been on that. Uh, it's, it's not a, as you can see with the audit, it's not an issue that's going away. Um, and we're just kind of curious where it is. And I don't know if the board, if you would be, uh, supportive of me making some calls just to see where it is. I'm not asking right now that we do anything. But if there is something that's going to happen within the region, I think would be good for us to know. And is it, uh, even though we're not participating in this stage, is it something that we could benefit from yet in the future?
I think any preparation is beneficial. I don't see why not. There's no harm there.
Yeah.
There's not going to be some.
Knowledge.
That, that's the thing. I would make sure that I'm not committing, I just want to know where, where costs are going up.
No doubt.
Yes. Um, I just, it's, everything on, on this has been covered. I just had a, uh, idea, I guess, related to a possible other millage. And I, I know we've got a lot of millages. Um, what about a millage? And I don't know if this is possible. I've not ran it by you at all. Um, what about a millage for the corrections department for the jail? Is that a possibility?
Yes. If you wanted to put a millage on the ballot for people to vote on, yes, you could do that. It's a county function. Um, yeah, just the only other one I'm familiar with was a construction millage in Ingham County where they actually had a millage to build the jail. Uh, some counties, gosh, I want to say Luthland, but I'm not sure. Um, they don't have a jail, but I think there, there may be a, a millage there where they pay for the transport of their inmates to Sioux State Marie. Uh, so yeah, definitely. Short answer is yes.
What are you guys' thoughts? I, I just am throwing the question out there as far as what you, um, that is not my area of expertise whatsoever. I, it's just a question that, um, I had that would obviously help with what we just heard. Looking at where a lot of our expenditures are, um. And again, it's a frightening conversation with, with all the, uh, millages that are out there right now, but I, it hasn't been brought up that I'm aware of. Um.
I would.
Thankfully, the, the road patrol did, did pass. So, you know, it, it may be possible that something like this would pass and that would really relieve, that would save some jobs, that would, uh, definitely relieve some stress off of our budget.
I would say probably take about two mills to do that.
Whoa.
Well, I mean, the budget's two and a half million. It keeps going up every year.
Yeah.
And a mill is a million dollars. I would say you take at least two mills at least.
I, I, my question, my question was just what's your thoughts on a millage? Not an amount, was just like, what are your overall general thoughts?
Well, I gotta have know what the amount is. It all depends on what the amount is, if I agree with it or not.
Is it replacement? I mean, would that pay for the operation? Okay, not add to.
Right.
Okay.
Replacement.
I, my answer to his question was yes, that was my thought as well.
It's my thought as well. And it would take two, two and a half mills to do that.
Well, sure, still here. Can we get his?
Commissioner, I will. Commissioner Willsey, what are your thoughts?
I, I mean, I think it's a great question and I'd like to talk more about it. Um, I mean, are, are we concerned about voter exhaustion this coming May, August? Absolutely, but it's a huge topic for us. Um, and I'd like to talk more about it.
Commissioner Mayhew?
We got the order decided and everything else.
That's basically what it is.
Is this, this is kind of an early stage. Are you, are you guys comfortable talking about this? Sheriff, or is this something, again, this was just conversation? Is this something you want to talk about?
Conversation, we have to do some research on that.
Okay. Can we put this on? There's, we have some time. So for the August, you said the deadline was April thirtieth, right? So this could also go on the November.
Good. Yep.
I'd say let's continue this, uh, at our next.
Conversation?
No.
Commissioner.
I'll wait in this conversation. Okay. I'll hold it. I'll, I'll hold it.
Do your best. Hold it.
I'm trying real hard.
Uh, anything else before we go into public comment, guys? Commissioners?
No.
Item six, public comment. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment in the room? Come on up.
Hi. Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Um, as you all know, Judge Mary Beebe for the eighty second district court, I just thought I'd make a comment since, um, my office was brought up in the audit. Um, and just to, and the questions that you had, Chair, um, our audit is done. We actually finally had the meeting, um, on February first with the scale, um, which is a state court administrative office. Um, and thankfully, um, most of you, I mean, you've all met Danielle. Um, I could not be more thankful to have had, uh, an administrator willing to come over here and help um, with the situation that I came into. Um, most of you know that I requested that audit before I actually even took office once I was elected. Um, because it has to be requested and then it takes time, um, and obviously it's been a year and we finally got the results. Um, but as also indicated, and I'm glad that Nathan mentioned it, um, Danielle has been working extremely hard to correct the issues that were in place. Um, I would say we're over probably ninety-five percent done. Um, I'm thankful for Karen who is, um, continuing to work with Danielle to get the banking stuff taken care of. And then we can, now that we have the audit done and we can reconcile everything, we're starting new. Um, with, uh, also trying to get that system in place with the computer so that the how even things are done actually through a system that you can push a button and get your numbers without penciling and things like that. So there's been so many changes. I'm proud of my staff a, a, as a whole, um, for having to deal with some of the changes that we've had to put into place and we're continuing to do on a regular basis. Um, but I would think that Tim and Karen would, um, agree with me that Danielle has worked hard to, um, fix those areas that were, um, a high concern of mine when I came in and through the audit that we found. Um, but thankfully, we're on the right track. Um, we're going to get there sooner, hopefully than later. Um, I also know that apparently at another meeting, it was talked about, um, the mileage that we are paying for Danielle to come back and forth. I have to say, I am extremely sad that that was brought up at all. Because one, my budget is my budget, it's been, it's been set. But also her coming over here and taking the place of, um, the prior administrator. Me not being able to fill that position because there's nobody that could have done it coming in new, except for Danielle to come over and, and take her time. But she doesn't get paid nearly enough of what she is worth. And we are saving sixty-two thousand dollars right now. I mean, not having a full-time administrator. So to be worrying about her mileage is a little sad to me. Because again, she's taking her time to come over here, she stays late, she comes to meetings, she meets with everybody that comes into her office to ask her questions because she's so knowledgeable in so many things. But nobody comes to me and asks me about the mileage or what we're saving, but then it's brought up. I've asked you guys before to either come to me, ask me to come to a meeting, I'm happy to answer the questions. But just to have it said and talked about and not addressed with me is concerning. But sixty-two thousand dollars is what I'm saving by not hiring an administrator right now and using Danielle. Who is gracious enough and I hope will continue to help until we can get this all fixed and working the way it should be working. Um, so I just wanted to let you guys know where we are at. Um, we're getting there and hopefully in the next few months, right Karen, will be exactly where we should be as far as using the treasurer's office for our banking, doing the things that need to be done. Um, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. Also, Tim, I would just ask with the reading that you did of the, um, animals that maybe you get with the ADA coordinators, make sure that that is officially the sign to have up there. There's many things you can't ask people about or can't require. I don't want, and especially something saying that's coming from the court. Because I don't think I'd agree with that reading of that. That, so I would suggest getting with the ADA coordinators, making sure that we're requesting, making sure our security knows what they can and cannot ask as people bring in their animals. Um, so that's very important, um, and it's probably something that should be put in with your court security meeting, put into your building and security policies, but I would ask that you do that. Um, so mainly, I just wanted to let you guys know, we're moving in a positive direction in my office and will continue to do so.
I make a comment.
You, you can and then I will. Go ahead.
Um, I've worked with Danielle and I find that she's an invaluable asset to the courts. Um, she has done so much and she's still finding out things that, um, that are new to her, that, um, probably hard to believe to her. But, um, I, I, I really enjoy working with her. She brings up a lot of things that we've talked a few times, not so much lately. Then she probably so busy and I have been too, but, um, yeah, I think it's, I think it's wonderful. Uh, we have her here. Personally, I just so keep her here, but
I, I think
Well, me too.
I think that's where this was directed. I, I guess I, I, I'm not really sure why this individual or why this, I don't think anybody was targeted or attacked. I think some questions were asked as far as what the plan is moving forward. We hadn't had an update on the audit that was going on upstairs. Um, I had no idea where it was or that it was near done. I knew you guys had a, a mess nicely put. I knew that it was trying to, you were, you were in the process of fixing it and I think some questions were asked as far as where you guys were. Um, and what, what the plan was moving forward. Are you going to put somebody in that position? So this individual is not true. Yes, I seen the mileage. It was unbelievable, um, between two different places. Are we sharing this position? Like, is there a plan moving forward since this is almost done and over with? I don't think, uh, there was anything directed towards this individual. Obviously, she's done amazing things. So I don't, I don't, uh, it shouldn't have been directed that way or taken that way. It was, what is the plan moving forward? With this amount of mileage, is this person going to continue this? You know, give us an update on it.
Well, and I, and the problem is, I really don't know that. Um, it starts time. I would love to give a date. Um, but I don't know that. If I'm with Brenda, if it was up to me, um, I'd ask Danielle and have Danielle continue to do it. Um, never could she do it at what she's making right now, because it's just not
That's fair.
Um, because she's having to work so much time extra as well. However, um, it's, we're just at that beginning process now of first finding out what was wrong, how we correct it, getting into the, getting the new stuff into place, which is going to then take training of getting that all taken care of right, making sure it's done right and then, then going from there and I'll have to talk to Judge Bennett. Um, who's the chief judge on that and decide where I'm going to go forward and how I'm going to go forward. Um, and then trying to find somebody that would even have the ability to do so. And you know, and with my current staff and you know, there's, they're part of the union, so you know, changing a position for them would mean changing different insurance. And all those different things that people even have to look at. So I'm, I'm not quite sure yet. I don't have an answer for, for that. I'm trying to take it one step at a time because as um, Simmons, uh, mentioned, we're, we find stuff new every day of things that have to be looked at and um, addressed. And so we're working in day by day to try to get through that. Um, and again, like I've always said to everybody, you know, my office is an open door. Um, and if you want to ever meet with me, questions or whatever, I'm happy to do that. Um, and it just to me that being here or knowing you guys need me here or have questions about my office. I'd like to be here and have Danielle here that we could answer that right away without concerns that, you know, people are being, you know, brought up that nobody here knows the answer to.
Well, we asked him to get those answers and, and so we appreciate you being here.
I'm happy to do that. If I would have came, I would have came ahead of time. Like I would have came in the last meeting to answer it for you.
I don't think the question came up before that. Uh, can I say?
Yeah, go ahead, sir. Commissioner Scott, you have the floor.
I think, I think this, this is the entrapment of being public. Okay, we can't have this meeting in light in public. So we ask a question, it's public.
I'm happy for that. I'm, I'm absolutely happy for that.
I know, I know. And it was the, it was the corporate boardroom, the public's not there. There's no soundbite to get from that, you know? But when we sit here, when we say something out loud, whether it's a question or it's a statement, we get voted on that particular question or that particular thing. And I think you heard us tonight that there was five or six different things that we want to talk about as a whole board because if I just go to your office and ask you that question, I got to come back and translate that to everybody.
Well, and I, and Mr., and Mr. Scott, I have no, I mean, transparency to me is very important. Which is why I work so hard to make sure we're doing stuff correctly. Um, all I'm saying is that I feel like sometimes we're an email to say, hey, Judge, come on in to the meeting because we're going to be asking questions about this. I'm not asking them to have private meetings together. I'm just saying, let me know, let me know there's a question.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to address it.
Yeah.
Um,
But we didn't take any further than that anyway.
So, but just so you know, I mean, because I, you know, Danielle's busy, I'm busy, but I want to answer these questions. But I want to, I need to know that, that they're coming and it, it's easier to, easier to answer, but although I think Tim could have answered how much we're saving.
Well, I, I, I brought it up. I looked at claims and it was five or six hundred dollars in, in mileage and I looked at the days and I'm like, holy smokes. And I know it was brought up quite a few months ago, like this, this poor individual's doing a lot of traveling and, and there is a huge cost there. What is this plan moving forward? Is this a position that can be? And, and Tim said frankly, he, he wasn't sure. He was going to contact you and, and here you are. So thank you.
Here I am. So anyways, yes, I don't know the long term, um, but you know, she comes when she has to come. And that's changed, it's, it's settled down a little bit because of the audits done. And we, you know, she was here pretty much every day for a very long time. Um, but, uh, she comes when she has to come and I just wanted to let everybody know and again, feel free to reach out if you have questions.
Commissioner Summers?
I want to comment. I, I think that comment, uh, if I'm not mistaken, was, was mentioned in a budget committee meeting and I think it was satisfied at that point. It was like no big deal, but how much Danielle does. And I definitely appreciate her and I think it was draft immediate about that. Uh, the mileage thing. I remember the first time I saw it, when she first started coming here, it was like, whoa. And I asked about it and then I found out what it was all about. So, um, no, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
Do you have anything?
I just, I've had been a pleasure working with Danielle, extremely intelligent, hardworking woman. I know you've come into this Judge Beebe with having some major challenges and I just think it's a great example of when we work together and we're passionate about something and we are smart about the topic, we can make good change. So I appreciate what you're doing and, uh, looking forward to seeing what's to come.
Yes, me too.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for your time. Any other public comment? In the room? Come on. Any public comment? Oh, are you coming up, sir? Come on up. Good evening. You got to come up a little so the public can see on the There you go, sir.
Uh, Infinity Sports Complex and Convention Center, uh, special use went well last month. It was received positively. Uh, thank you. We go for a site review on March twenty-seventh. That's next Wednesday. With that timeline, we anticipate doing land acquisition by the end of June, um, and starting our project by August, uh, subject to obviously all of our permits being approved. Uh, September twenty-twenty-six is right now what we have slated for phase one convention. And then we have, uh, set aside some funds for emergency services. There's been a lot of questions about fire trucks and heights and things like that. We have not fully evaluated, um, the fire department, but from a fire protection standpoint, we'll be using sprinkler systems as allowed by code. Infinity Park is our West Branch Township Housing Project. It's a hundred and thirty-four units total. Um, that goes for approval on April second. Uh, that has been received really well. There's five retail locations. Two commercial buildings and the northern loop of that project is a gated community. Uh, we are working to make that walkability, see Beala Connect on Refinery Road, uh, back to the business loop so you can get up to uh, Cook Road, exit two twelve. Two units will be rented for a dollar to a teacher in law enforcement. And that project will start on April sixteenth this year, subject to, uh, permits. Our project in the city of West Branch was not approved to move forward for a hundred and twelve housing units. Uh, therefore, we'll be seeking alternative sites for those hundred and twelve units. Um, project red tie, which was done years and years ago now, says we need about nine hundred units in our county. Um, so we're taking a small dent in it.
Question for you. The, I get, has all the parcels for the sports complex been purchased?
No, they won't be purchased until after approval, uh, shooting for the end of June, at least.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Mom's on there. She doesn't know how to unmute yet. Any public comment? Motion to adjourn at seven fourteen. That was Matt from Kind, Commissioner Scott.
You slug me, you slug me coming in.